City Council Public Hearing will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Camara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
The motion to open the public hearing has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc., for new jointly-owned pole locations and relocation as follows. At Airport Road, install one jointly-owned pole on Airport Road. Install one jointly-owned anchor on Airport Road. National Grid is proposing to install one new 45-foot jointly-owned pole, Pole 36-50, and the anchor halfway between existing Pole 36 and Pole 37 on Airport Road. This new pole will allow National Grid to relocate the three-phase pole-mounted transformers from Pole 36-1 on Airport Road over to this new pole in order to utilize Pole 36-1 for a new service for Allied Waste Industries. In accordance with Plan Number 30826280, are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing you have your proponent? Okay. Come on down, please, state your name and address for the record and make your case. Speak into the microphone, please.
Aaron Roy, 1250 Brayton Point Road, Somerset. For this petition hearing, we're looking to help Allied Waste Industries out by setting a new pole on Airport Road halfway between Pole 36 and Pole 37, relocate the three-phase transformer bank to that new pole in order to feed a new service for them for new car charges.
All right. Thank you. You might as well just stay there. Are there any opponents? Any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, move on to item number two. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, for one newly jointly-owned pole location as follows. On Laurel Street, install one jointly-owned pole on Laurel Street. Install one solely-owned anchor on Laurel Street. National Grid is proposing to set a new jointly-owned pole, 26-50, and solely-owned anchor in a line between existing poles 26 and 27 on Laurel Street. This proposed pole will allow National Grid to run a new overhead feed into the Duvern apartment complex. The existing overhead fee off pole number 27 on Laurel Street will be eliminated after the new service is energized. In accordance with Plan Number 30811760, are there any proponents to this public hearing?
Same concept with this one. Looking to set a jointly-owned pole in line between two existing poles. This is for the dual apartments. We've been working with Ed and Arthur, the Florida Housing District Authority, I'm sorry, to help revamp the service in this complex. Hence, this new pole to allow a new overhead service across the street into the complex.
All right, thank you. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, move on to item number three. Secondhand article store, Laura Pacico, Ph.D., doing business as Laura Vintage Addict, 369 June Street, Florida, Mass. 02720, for permission to operate and maintain a secondhand article store located at 1800 South Main Street. Vintage goods and repurposed furnitures to be sold. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Do you want to come down, please? Just give us a brief understanding of what it is you're trying to do.
Hi. So I'm just looking to open a vintage goods store in that location. We'll be selling vintage goods and some curated home decor and some repurposed furniture for that area.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Good luck.
Good luck to you. Good luck.
Thank you. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, move on to item number four. Jeanie Allard, 123 Alsop Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 123 Alsop Street, the applicant proposes to extend the existing 12-foot curb opening by an additional 14-foot on the west side. The total opening and the location will be 26 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? You want to come down to speak? You don't have to, but you can come down if you like to.
No, I mean...
You're in favor? Okay. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, move on to item number five. Brian Ruhr, 41 Crestwood Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 41 Crestwood Street, the parcel is currently serviced by 24-foot curb opening slash driveway. The applicant proposes to construct a separate 12-foot curb opening slash driveway. The total opening for the location will be 36 feet. Site plan review is pending. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. MMS Realty LLC, 22 Boomer Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At President Avenue and Dyer Street, the parcel currently has an existing 16-foot curb opening slash driveway on Dyer Street and proposes to construct a new 24-foot curb opening on President Avenue. The total opening for the location will be 40 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public meeting? Any opponents? Seeing none, move on to item number seven. Anthony Canton, 170 Westley Road, Plymouth, Mass. 02360, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 106 Howland Street, the parcel is currently serviced by 22-foot curb opening slash driveway. The applicant proposes to extend the existing driveway an additional 18 feet. The total opening for the location will be 40 feet. Site plan review is also pending. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Okay, come on down, please.
Hello. This was a four-unit, which I guess the people that I bought the building off have turned it into a three, so I'm turning it back into a four, which has just been approved by the zoning board. And I guess the approval requires me to add two parking spots on the side of the garage that's there. So in order to do that, I just need to cut the curb to add the parking spots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents at all? Seeing none, move on to item number eight. Street Acceptances. Hayfield Lane extending from Highland Farm Road to Northern and Southern Terminus. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number nine. Highland Farm Road extending from Highland Avenue to Hayfield Lane. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Opponents seeing none, we move on to item number 10. Old Pasture Way extending from Highland Farm Road to Terminus. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number 11. Steep Brook Terrace extending from Highland Farm Road to Terminus. Any proponents? Are there any proponents at all? Seeing none, are there any opponents? And no opponents, move on to item number 12. Glendale Street extending from North Main Street to Terminus. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number 13. Wayland Street extending from North Main Street to Terminus. Are there any proponents to this public hearing?
Okay.
Any proponents? Okay, come on down, please.
Good evening, city councilors, everyone here. My name's Lori Mitchell. I live on 2568 North Main Street. I would like to have Wayland Street accepted, simply because the road is really patched. And whenever you're trying to walk, either getting things from the back of your truck or your car, it's really wobbly, and you can really fracture an ankle or something like that. It's a nice area. It's a nice road. It just needs to be paved, and it also needs to be accepted to be paved and be part of the city. So I hope that that is accepted, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents at all?
No, he's a proponent.
Excuse me? You're in favor of this?
Yes.
So you're a proponent. Okay, you can come down if you like to. He's a proponent, not an opponent.
Good evening. I was the one that did the petition for the exception for the Wayland Street. Like I said, they already do the snow removal, they do the trash.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Yes. They already do everything. They do the snow removal, they'll do the trash, the mailman goes there. So why not the city take off? And I'm saying this way, we have a nice brand-new street, and that's all I ask for. I'm in favor of this.
Could you please just give your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Louis Sous, and I live in 19 Wayland Street.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any additional proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Opponents, want to come down, please?
Hi. Deion de Camara, by Wayland Street. I'm asking for the street to stay the way it is. We have problems and issues already with the street, and it's not a safe street to be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, on to item number 14. Tax Classification. Adoption of the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2024. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, I want to take the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Councilor C. One?
No, just... Do we usually have the Board of Assessors give a presentation in the public hearing, or...?
We could if you'd like to, Councilor.
I think that's what we've done in the past.
Then we can do that. That's fine if you want to have them. Are you prepared to come down and give a...? Please come down then. And I'm... Under the opinion that you will come down as proponents. Okay.
Do you have to reopen the hearing, Mr. President? No, I stopped it before we closed it. Just not to be technical, but just want to make sure.
I didn't hit the gavel, so the meeting is still open. Please just state your name and address for the record, and then you can state your case. Just want people to be aware that they did come down to make a presentation when the class was adopted by the Council and when we did make the change to what percentage was going to go in what category. But we'll listen to them today as well. You can start anytime you're ready.
Before I start, Council President, because we have our whole board here, I'd like to move to reconvene time, meeting. 6:18. With that, we move forward. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us down here. It's another year. This was a challenging year for us. We hired a new assessor who did a marvelous job. We had a crew that was out there from a revow company who measured over 12,000 parcels. They did a wonderful job. It was another year of growth for the City of Fall River. And I can just come up with some facts. I mean, I've been around a long time, and a lot of these members have as well, and I never thought that we would be over $9 billion now in total taxable property. Last year, we were at 8.6 billion. This year, we're at 9.7 billion. So we grew over $1 billion in value within one year. It's a tribute to the people who have faith in us, which are the taxpayers, have faith in our government, and have faith in the things we do, in our schools and the services we provide as well. Last year, I remember coming down and saying that we picked up over $3 million in new growth. The actual number, I think, was close to 3.7. This year, we picked up over 2.9. The numbers keep growing, which is a great thing. It's growing from a point of housing. It's growing from a point of commercials, and it's also growing greatly from utilities. Utilities has been a large factor in our growth. I'd like to have Dan make a couple of his interjections on what happened, because he's doing, again, like I stated, a marvelous job, and so is the staff. And Dan, do you have anything?
Dan Lane, tax assessor, City of Fall River. I just went through and did a few of the highlights as far as the growth goes for the city. We had 40 new homes that were completed this year. We may have had more started, but there was 40 completed. Two and three families. The biggest growth there was renovations and rehabs. Mixed use, primarily it was tie agreements that have come off or changed in valuation. And the biggest, as Richard said, was utilities. The gas company and electric company putting in new substations and new gas piping, which you've seen all over Fall River, the roads tore up. But those were the biggest improvements this year, and the values continue to grow. Looking at sales for next year, they're still on the rise, so...
So what's the new growth number?
New growth number is 2,000,000... 2,939.
What's that compared to last year?
Last year was 3.7 million.
So what do you project?
So right now, we're projecting, I think it's somewhere around 1.8 for this next year, but obviously, it's largely dependent on utilities. This year, we have 1.7 in just utility growth, and there's no way to tell what National Grid and Liberty Utility, the gas and electric companies, will do. You know, they don't give us a progression as far as are they 50% done with the city? Are they 100% done? So it's just going to depend on where they're at. And that was the large number this year, once again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor C. One, Counselor Kadeen?
Just in terms of... Terms of the utilities, so if they're, especially the gas company, if they're not giving you projections, how do you calculate what they've completed? Is it just...?
So every February, they give us what they're... They have to turn in a form of list, and they give us what they've completed that year, but there is no percent complete. They just give us numbers. It's broken down. You know, they've laid X number of pipe. They've laid, you know, they break it all out by each little piece and part, so...
So we don't know how much is remaining? They haven't given us a total?
They have not, no, sir.
How you?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. Six, Counselor Vice President Pearl?
Counselor Kadeem asked the question that I was going to ask, but I will take the time to say I congratulate you, Mr. Lay, in your office, and I'm really happy to hear that Sandra Cameron got her MAA. So you have all Massachusetts-accredited assessors in your office. I think there's only one person that's working on it now, and I think that's great, that they've done that, so congratulation.
Thank you.
And I hope your office gets the new rug and gets fixed up right away. Tough to work in close quarters.
The renovation's about 80% complete.
Right, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, there be no further questions. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Roll call, Nancy Hino? Rich Wilson?
Yes.
Rich, Counselor, just time. 6:24. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
I like those four-minute meetings.
Yeah.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, public meeting is now closed. City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Camara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing, meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. It's now time for citizens' input time. We have one individual that signed up. Kelly Buchanan, subject matter, illegal encampments.
Good evening. Congratulations, all.
Thank you.
I am here tonight to follow up on the progress concerning my grievance regarding illegal encampments within our city, specifically the encampment located just below Kennedy Park. Please advise on the progress that has been made since my last appearance as the illegal encampments continue to grow in size. Again, I thank you for your time, consideration, and attention in this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business between finance, I entertain a motion to adjourn finance. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. The regular City Council meeting will begin at 7 o'clock. Regular City Council meeting will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi? Pelletier? Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Camara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we start, I just want to say that Counselor Pelletier did call, say that he wasn't... He was going to attend the meeting, but then he didn't feel 100%, so he wasn't doing that well, so he's going to just ride with this one out. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and a proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $172,372.77 for emergency medical services for the purchase of medical equipment for home health care services.
Motion to approve.
Motion to defer to finance, if you'd like.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You want to defer to finance?
No, I just... I asked a question if it's in order. If not, I will approve it.
We can approve it. What else do I have to finance?
Motion approved.
Motion approved has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor C. Two, Counselor Deion?
Yeah, I kind of wish it had gone to finance for the simple reason...
It still could, Counselor.
Excuse me?
It still can. If this motion fails, you can put it to finance, you can make the motion, whatever Counselor wants to do.
For the simple reason that EMS does have an $11.6 million budget. They have an enterprise account, and I would like to hear more on the validity of taking $172,000 in ARPA funding when you have that kind of a budget available.
Make a motion.
So you already made a motion, Deion?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
So I'd make a motion to Senate Finance.
Second.
Second.
Motion to Senate Finance has been made and seconded. You yield, Counselor?
I do.
On that motion, Counselor C. Three, Counselor Kilby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that was the motivation. I looked at the sum of the... But, you know, thanks to Counselor Deion bringing up the fact it is an enterprise fund, self-sustaining account, so I think we... Just some discussion on it would be appropriate.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Motion to defer to finance has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and tie agreements. The first is for Sanford Spinning Mills LLC at 206 Globe Mills Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. And seconded. On the motion, Counselor C. Seven, Counselor Raposo?
I'm just... In watching the TIF board meeting, there was a question about an agreement being established for the back taxes to be paid. Do we know? I don't know. Counselor Kadeen may get an answer to this. Was an agreement put in place? Oh, I... I'm sorry, through you, Mr. President. I don't know that there was, but Mr. Fiala mentioned that he would not let it come before us unless it was paid, so I would assume that it was paid.
Yeah, I don't think this TIF will go through until that's... Until it's paid or there's an agreement to pay.
Contingent, so it's contingent on?
Correct.
Okay, can we just make a motion that says...
We can approve this contingent that there is an agreement or that it's being paid.
Yep. Thank you.
Clerk, can you note that, please? Do you want to make that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On the motion, Counselor C two.
I just have a couple of questions. In order for H, for them to H-dip through the Commonwealth, the properties have to be in a declared H-dip zone. Is Globe Mills Avenue, for example, which is one of these, are they in an H-dip zone? That's the street that goes to Cuss Middle School. Are each of these properties in an H-dip zone already? Because if they aren't, they have to be declared an H-dip zone by the council before you can move forward with this.
Yeah, so I'm sure they won't get the funding if they're not.
But are they in an H-dip zone? Because if they're not, it's, I don't, it's a moot point. I believe it was.
I don't know about a moot point, Counselor. If they're not in H-dip zone, they're not going to get the funding. If they are, it's going to get approved. I think they are. You think they're not. I don't know.
I'm not saying they aren't.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying I don't know. Are they? I, is Globe Mills Avenue an H-dip zone? And then the other thing is.
We, I, I think we were told that all, all the properties were in the H-dips.
Yes.
Yeah. At the TIF board meeting.
Right. I'm not sure what part of Globe Mills Avenue should refer to, but I think this, I, you can't get a TIF location in the H-dip zone, so.
Yeah, I, I think the H-dip zone ran that whole.
Coast.
Right.
And I know we're talking about the first one, but on the Troy Street, they went from twenty-seven to the, to thirty-six units. What was the change? What caused that change?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Went from twenty-six to twenty-seven units.
On Troy Street, from twenty-seven to thirty-six units, it was increased. Were they going to have three-bedroom units and now decide to only have one- and two-bedroom units? What? I'm assuming you put in apartments according to square footage. How did it change from twenty-six to seven to thirty-six units?
I don't have that answer.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that coming up at the TIF board meeting, but I don't think it goes basically, basically based on square footage. It doesn't determine how many units you put in based on square footage. You can have different-sized apartments.
Well, it would if, if all of your one bedrooms were X number of square feet and you had this many square feet in the building, it, it would stand to reason. I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting the question out there. I don't know how it increased by nine units. That's, that's what they're looking for. And then the other thing that bothers me is minimum of eighty percent for market rate that nobody, nobody, nobody ever puts ten percent even aside for affordable housing. I'm not talking low income, I'm talking affordable income. You know, I don't know how many units we've built in this city, but for the sake of argument, if there's been two thousand units put in, that would be two hundred people who would have the ability to rent an apartment who doesn't, don't have the ability now. So that bothers me a little bit as well. But with that, I yield.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor C six, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did before, but I don't know, I guess.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't really matter now. All those properties were in H-dip zones, but the reason Troy Street got expanded was because the market dictated one- or two-bedroom units. And that's why they were made smaller, because it seems that they're more marketable, the one- and two-bedroom units. Because I had asked about that, because one of the things I had asked about with Mr. Fiallo before was, all this market rate housing, you're having three bedrooms or how many bedrooms? People aren't going to come alone, but they bring family, so that's going to increase police, fire, the school department, et cetera. And he said most of them are one- or two-bedroom.
You yield, Counselor? Guess she does.
Opposed.
On the, so, all, let's, let's take it over. Was that?
We're on A.
Yeah, we are, we are on A.
Yes.
The tie agreement for Sanford Springs Mills LLC at two oh six Globe Mills Avenue alone. It's in, it's in, these are separate. So let's try again. Is there a motion to adopt this tie agreement?
A. I thought we did.
A.
Yes, motion, so made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat two opposed. Thank you. Item two B. Madam Clerk? Let me just read it out so that we know.
Two B is a tie agreement for Durfee Trust Limited Partnership at eighty-eighty-four North Main Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat two opposed.
And two C is the tie agreement amendment for sixty-six Troy Street LLC at sixty-six Troy Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. It's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat two opposed. Madam Clerk?
Item three is a communication from the mayor and orders to accept and expend grants. The first in the amount of two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. Do you want to do them separately?
Motion to accept, correct?
Second.
Second.
Who was that, Ms.?
I was going to say do you want them separately, but they are two orders.
That was an easy one. Let's see.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second is the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice's Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for the purchase of virtual reality-based de-escalation training equipment and four-hundred sixty-four hours of de-escalation training.
Motion to accept.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is a communication in an order to accept a vehicle donation from Alfred Nemmer of a twenty-eleven Nissan Altima to the Fall River Fire Department for vehicular extrication training.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Second.
Any opposed?
We send a thank you.
Can we send a thank you?
Counselor C?
We send a thank you.
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
Item five is the Board of Assessors regarding the establishment of the FY twenty-four tax factor and tax levy.
Motion to.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Would be appropriate?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One point seven five.
City Council reconvene. Madam Clerk, we just called out the tax factor.
Yep.
One point seven five.
Yeah. So the residential factor is the one point seven five percent.
Motion to adopt the one point seven five.
Second.
Motion to adopt one point seven five has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then we have the order that determines the, the various classes. So for residential, we have sixty-nine point two-two-six-eight. Commercial, fifteen point one-zero-six-six-four. Industrial, eight point three-eight-seven-seven. And personal property, seven point two-seven-eight-nine, all based on the one seven five.
You need a motion on that?
Yes.
Oh, motion made.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to community ordinance legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For second reading and enrollment, we have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion passes second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass with second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas there has been significant development in smoke and carbon monoxide detector devices over the past few years, including photoelectric and ionization technology, and whereas there are state laws requiring that these devices be updated prior to the sale of a home, and whereas all residential real estate owners, whether they are selling their property or not, should be updated on these recommendations, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the fire chief and any other interested parties to provide education and information to homeowners and landlords regarding these alarm system updates for the safety and well-being of all city residents.
Motion to refer to Committee on Public Safety.
Second.
Motion to adopt the resolution without automatically putting in public safety. Motion be to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Counselor C six, Counselor Vice President Per.
I just came upon this, that if you have a smoke detector that has a nine-volt battery in them, I mean, every year, my husband would always go around, change everybody's nine-volt batteries, but I guess in two thousand sixteen, the legislature changed it, where the smoke detectors you should have are smoke, carbon monoxide, and they've got to be voice-activated. So I think those are really good. So if people have property or their own home, if you have a smoke detector, getting that one is better. It alerts the person if there is carbon monoxide or smoke, it gets people out, you know, quicker, gets the fire department there sooner. I just think they're great, but I didn't even know that if you sell something, that's the only kind you can have. But as you go along, if one breaks, buy this one, because it really, it's a lot better to have it voice-activated and, so I just think people need to know about it, so maybe they could just bring it up at a public safety meeting and people would be aware of it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk?
Item nine is the order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England for one new jointly-owned pole location at Airport Road.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten is the order granting permission to Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England for one jointly-owned pole location and one solely-owned anchor at Laurel Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is an order granting permission to Laura Pachico, Ph.D., doing business as Laura's Vintage Attic at eighteen hundred South Main Street. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the order granting permission to Jean Allard for curbing removal at one twenty-three Allop Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen is an order granting permission to Brian Rua at forty-one Crestwood Street for the removal of curbing.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Excuse me.
Counselor C two, Counselor Dion.
I'd like to amend that to motion to adopt pending results of the site plan review, because it's still pending.
On item number thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You put in a form of motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Pending the site plan review. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes as amended.
Item fourteen is the order granting permission to MMS Realty LLC for removal of curbing at Zero President Avenue and Dyer Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And fifteen is the order granting permission to Anthony Caton for the removal of curbing at one oh six Howland Street.
Motion to adopt pending approval, uh, results of the site plan review.
Second.
Motion to adopt pending approval of the site plan review has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Items seventeen are applications for auto body shop license renewals. We have Jan Pankowski at two seventy Shove Street, Joseph Jennings at sixty-four Judson Street, John and Michael Pachico at twenty-two twenty Pleasant Street, and Marco Moniz and Lautalino Viveras at five Laurel Street.
Motion to adopt.
The police did not give a favorable recommendation on the last.
Motion to adopt, all.
Motion to adopt, all?
The last one, Marco Monas and Lautalino Viveras at Laurel Street.
Motion has been made to adopt.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we know why that wasn't a favorable?
I guess the gentleman...
He's here.
Had a restraining order put on him to someone that he was seeing. Now that's no longer the case, so the chief just felt that with a restraining order, he probably shouldn't have a license, but he still has a business to run and...
Relate to is the word.
Correct. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses. We have Jan Pankowski at 270 Shove, Roger Piva at 252 Crescent Street, Joseph Jennings at 64 Judson Street, Roger Corey, 46 McGowan Street, Antonio Pinto, 2553 South Main Street, Joseph Maderis, 1439 Plymouth Avenue, Fousey Rod at 256 Bedford Street, Wayne Seneschall, 122 Lowell Street, and Cardozo's Garage at 681 Brayton Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt renewals has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty is a communication from Alan Macumber regarding the 2021 appraisal of the Bank Street Amory.
Motion accept, place on file.
Second.
Motion accept and place on file has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-one is the final report of the acceptance of Hayfield Lane extending from Highland Farm Road to Northern and Southern Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-two is the final report on the acceptance of Highland Farm Road extending from Highland Avenue to Hayfield Lane.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the final report of the acceptance of Old pasture Way extending from Highland Farm Road to Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the final report of the acceptance of Steep Brook Terrace extending from Highland Farm Road to Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the final report of the acceptance of Glendale Street extending from North Main Street to Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
To adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And twenty-six is the final report on the acceptance of Wayland Street extending from North Main Street to Terminus.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have minutes of the Committee on Finance from October 24th.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Committee on Finance, October 24th, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we have minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held on October 24th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a communication from South Coast Wind Energy LLC Power Engineers filing their supplemental, final environmental impact report for the South Coast Wind Project.
Motion accept, place on file.
Second.
Motion accept and place on file has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have an application for a structure on or over a public way on behalf of the Greater Fall River Recreation for hanging a banner announcing the annual children's parade.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam clerk, could you just give everyone the date of that parade so we'll know in advance, so people can...
Parade is December 2nd.
December 2nd and what time, 3 o'clock?
One.
1 o'clock. Kennedy Park? Just so the public will be aware. Council, seat seven, Council opposing.
Yeah, the, I know, I spoke to Olivia yesterday, and there's going to be some information coming out regarding the parade, the tree lighting, all that shortly. They should have that.
Yeah, no, I know that. I just figured since we're talking about it, tell you, we might as well tell the people who are watching, they'll know it's December 2nd.
They'll see the flyer online, I'm, I'm sure. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And clerk?
Can we take a brief recess for some signatures?
Council recess for two minutes, I got some papers signed. City Council reconvene. Madam clerk?
On the resolution asking that the Public Safety convene with the fire chief and interested parties to discuss updates to smoke and carbon monoxide alarm systems for residential properties.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to adopt?
To adopt.
The resolution has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, for passage through final ordination is the miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to pass final ordination has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everybody. Good job.